Is he ready?
Yeah.
I'll wait a second. Now we're ready. Call a meeting to order at 5:33. The approval of the minutes of the meeting of the July 19th, 2023. Have a motion.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from our July 19th, 2023 meeting.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and also a second. All in favor, let it known by saying aye.
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 Aye. Oppose? Hearing none, ayes have it, motion carry. Number three, subdivision vision and land development. A modification request for Park City final subdivision plan.
Mr. Chairman, if you would like, I would like to add some notes here. Last month, we received a subdivision plan for Park City Mall and the plan is still under review. ELA has approached us to request for modification before the planning commission, before they develop the final plan for this project. So I invite Ms. Love to introduce those modifications.
Yes, sir.
As Mandali noted, we have submitted a final plan. We had submitted it as a sketch plan. I believe we did present to this group as well. We have addressed some of the comments from sketch plan phase and we've moved to a final subdivision land development plan. As you may recall, the request and the intent of Park City Center owned by Brookfield Properties is to create a simple subdivision for the three lots in the southwest corner. If you flip the plans open, the second sheet kind of shows you the zoomed in view of the area that we are looking to do this. But again, it's the Olive Garden down through DSW Bonefish Grill and Ashley Furniture on the left, that would be one lot, which is already somewhat separated by Plaza Boulevard, even though it's joined by deed to the full property. And then another lot would be created around Longhorn Steakhouse with an additional lot created around where BJ's Brew House Restaurant is. The resulting lands of Park City would be Lot 1 and that may be viewed a little more specifically on the very light colored, the first sheet, sheet four seven shows the remaining lands for Park City and then that would be Lot 1 and Lots 2, 3, and 4 would be as I described earlier. We have received review comments from CS Davidson and we did have a coordination phone call with Douglas and Mandali and CS Davidson as well as the Park City folks to talk through and Cody, I'm sorry, Cody Kiefer was on that as well, to speak to some of the review comments and try to receive some clarifications. Some of these pieces of the modifications relate to not providing full topography for the entire property. As we are creating lots with existing, we were not intending on providing any new physical improvements other than the lot creations themselves was the request from Brookfield Properties for my task. We however are making efforts, we have counted the numbers of existing trees and looking for opportunities in which to place proposed trees while trying to balance that with the maintaining some views from the intersection of Harrisburg Pike and Plaza Boulevard as it comes down to that intersection specifically of the buildings to the left. The visibility is very important to them for their patrons and to keep their businesses viable. So we were working to balance all of those regardless of protecting some views. There are a very large number of impediments that are along the sides of the curb and right-of-way along Plaza Boulevard. I would note Plaza Boulevard in this section is a public, a public street, a public right-of-way. And some of the photos, I did provide those just for general reference. The plan you're looking at also on the screen, I did highlight in red many of the obstructions that we're working to manage. There are traffic signal poles, light poles, traffic signage poles. We have a number of other utilities along those venues. We have fire hydrants. The light green colored trees are existing trees that are out there and you can see through some of the photos, those trees, many of those are particularly on the right-hand side along Longhorn and the BJ's Restaurant are quite mature. There's a large amount of mature shrubbery and those two restaurants, the current existing landscape materials are there from when the original land development plan for those properties were established. So there is mature vegetation that doesn't reflect on the plans as well, but you can certainly take a look and see where some of those vegetations exist. And on the left-hand side or the western side, there are rows of some vegetation and landscape beds. There are again, a number of traffic poles and other instances along that side of the street. The area on the bottom of the plan, which would be far left, right above where it says Old Harrisburg Pike is a steep sloped space within that right-of-way from the front of the curbing down towards Harrisburg Avenue. That area is within Pendant's right-of-way. There are two sets of overhead utility lines that parallel that specific section and that view is a little more obvious on the first photo on the packet that I gave with the photos there. So we had selected trees to go into that zone from the matrix that Cody has developed that he shared with us so that we can have appropriate sized trees that can be placed along there to help screen the end of that building, which is not as appealing from the street and the right-of-way, but also try to get some increased numbers of greenery and trees in there that are appropriate to be underneath both sets of those utility lines and those wires as well. So there's the general overview, the modifications themselves related to not providing existing topography for the entire property. Again, we are planning no specific, we were not proposing any specific improvements. The second modification would relate to not providing full utilities across the entire remaining portions. I have highlighted the utilities that are specific to the smaller lots here in which we are creating. That was more an effort to be responsive and show that these specific lots that are being newly created are served separately through the public water and sewer services was an early question from your sewer water departments was to ensure that separate services do establish to each of these buildings. Again, we are not looking to increase capacities or propose any changes or additions to these specific buildings and they are serviced individually. We did actually meet with Ben and Park City's facilities person and walked the site with him with regards to water. So the last two modifications that we were seeking to discuss this evening related to sidewalks. We, with the current configuration and the way that these lots are currently existing, we did not feel comfortable promoting the walkability and the connections to the primary intersection with Harrisburg Avenue, excuse me, Harrisburg Pike and Plaza Boulevard given the volumes, the amount of traffic, the number of the lanes and the widths across there. So we were seeking a modification to not provide the sidewalks as well on both sides in order to fit this new street trees in. We are very limited on space within those zones on both east and west side of Plaza Boulevard. Those smaller trees shapes are the ones that we were looking to provide as proposed trees. We may have opportunities to fit some more trees in in some locations, but the hope was to avoid the sidewalks for this current plan and this subdivision in creation of the lots for the reasons that I mentioned. And then the street trees, the second plan and the letter that we had submitted outlines, there is a pretty significant distance of street tree frontage or lot frontage, 1,918 feet. That equates at every 25 feet to a total number of required trees of 77. The light green trees as shown on this plan are totaling 20 existing mature trees. Therefore, we would have 57 additional trees that would be required by ordinance. There are 27 trees in the smaller symbols proposed on this plan in the configuration that you see. So we would be asking to provide a fee in lieu of 30 additional trees. Now, we have not been to Shade Tree Commission. We had earlier on in this project discussed this briefly with Cody. However, we have not walked the site specific with him and maybe that is something that we can also move forward and do. We have submitted to Shade Tree. We would be in front of them on the 15th of August here, so in about two weeks, we will be presenting and discussing what you see in front of you with the Shade Tree Commission as well. So I'm certainly open to questions. I'm open to try to answer anything that the group may wish to speak to and we're just trying to find a balance for a subdivision plan in terms of opportunities. There is no intent to rip buildings down and to do anything other than create the lots, which will be available for others to take ownership of from Park City and basically take that off of Park City's burden. And obviously that will provide them some financial gain and they don't have that management of these properties if someone else takes on that responsibility. So that's really where we were heading with this project.
Was this a request from Park City to do this or was this something you all took on?
With respect to the modifications early? It was actually discussed with city staff during our coordination meeting that we had last week, I believe. However, we do have, we do have more, more work to do in order to get our, address all of the comments. Our feeling is that receiving some direction tonight would certainly guide us on how to finish the completion and the finalization of our plans. Whether a full intense survey of the entire property would be required or not. Whether a full intense survey of the entire property would be required or not as far as providing topographic conditions, they don't have that in their hands at this moment. So it was a simple request that we're not touching the remaining lands of Lot 1, that would be the rest of the property and simply trying to create these lots in and of themselves in the southwest corner. Because it felt like a place that these could be separated. Plaza Boulevard already does separate the group to the left in essence, even though it's joined by deed. And the other two have natural access points of some existing driveways. We did analyze the parking and the green space and other zoning items specific to these three lots and we are compliant. We do not need a zoning relief for any of those requirements in the way we configured the lots in this situation.
I have two concerns. One is more of an immediate concern. The other one is perhaps a long-term, even though I cannot see into the future what they may be planning. It seems like a lot of things are indicating based on what's happening, what we'll be looking at in the next five to 10 years. The first one with the immediate concern I brought up at the last meeting was with the sidewalks related specifically to the two bus stops. The one, you can even see where the hedges are in the first picture. The second group of hedges back. When you wait for that bus, you're standing on a slope and when the bus opens its doors, it's at a hedge.
Okay.
So there's no real safe place, there's even a slope to the land for anyone to get onto that bus.
Right. I'm not sure those are official bus stops. I mean, in all honesty, I should know, I'm on the board. As you guys know that.
They do have signs, so I assume it's official. The other one across the street, yeah, that one immediately across the street, that one is hardly used because the next stop is inside the mall property.
Right. So that specific spot though is...
That's almost the lower hanging fruit for placing a sidewalk there to make that connectivity a little bit easier.
Yeah, understood.
So that would be my immediate concern, but the other one is more long-term. Once these properties are subdivided, if we do give approvals to the modifications and all of that, what incentive will there be in the future if the rest of this property is developed to make this more walkable and more connected to that? Because it seems like they are good.
Right, understand, understand. Yeah, I completely understand. I guess my response to that would be that, again, we could, we could certainly be amenable to perhaps a deferment or when this is developed in a land development plan that they are bound by that future land development plan. Whomever buys this, we don't know, I agree with you, we don't know what they may do. That is certainly not an intent. However, that purchaser will be obligated to come through with a full land development plan as well with the planning commission. So I don't know if there is a way to entertain any potential deferment or not from this if it's memorialized on the plans themselves. It's something, you know, we would certainly welcome some discussion on, but I certainly, I understand your point, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to state city staff in a position on these recommendations.
Yes.
For the modification request, number one, which is about the topographic feature, city staff recommends, city staff do not recommend approving this request because it's linked to the sidewalk modification request. The second one, modification for not providing location and size and materials for underground utility, city staff recommends approving this request because there is no change in proposed, in the utilities. The third one, modification to not provide sidewalk, city staff do not, does not recommend approving this request because creating walkable places will decrease the dependence on automobile and increase public transportation ridership. Number four, modification to not install street trees every 25 linear feet. City staff does not recommend approving this request. The designer has not demonstrated that they have explored all possible avenues to maximize street trees provision. Thank you.
I have a question. So relating or regarding the fact that it's acknowledged that these sites might transfer hands in the future, why only this section of Park City and not also this north section that's separated by Plaza Boulevard? Are there conversations going on specific to those sites?
No, no, there's not. And Park City did, did entertain the conversation from the city with regards to comp plan. They have been very clear. They're listening. They don't have any immediate plans and/or indications or long-term planning in which to pursue that at this point in time. It's simply a area that felt as if it could have a natural separation and would take these properties off of Brookfield Properties' management roles and whatnot and allow that to be under a different group, whoever may obtain that property and take that on from that aspect. And, you know, obviously the restaurants, you know, they lease, they rent and so on and so forth and there's no intent for those to change. That's what I'm told from Brookfield Properties.
Okay, yeah, and because like that just, it doesn't make sense to me that only those sites are being separated under that argument and not also the other side of the site.
Which portion, I'm sorry, do you mean?
North, it's the north section. Plaza Boulevard cuts it from site, or in this situation, it's all Lot 1 currently, but it's north of Shriners Road there.
That's Mannheim Township.
Is that Mannheim Township section of the property?
Right.
Okay, so you would need to go through a subdivision plan with them to do.
Right, and honestly, this quadrant is where it seemed to make sense to them from being fairly detached from the remainder of the complex, but where you're discussing is separate with Mannheim Township.
Okay. But yeah, aside from that, just, I agree completely with Mr. Whalen regarding the bus stop and I actually want to say like, it's, for me personally, it's not just that specific site, it's the walkability of the entirety of Park City. And I personally wouldn't feel comfortable subdividing Park City down without regards to walkability because some of the irony is that it's our most serviced bus location, but it's also one of the least walkable in the entirety of the city limits.
Right, I know their primary bus stop is on the backside near Coles.
Sure, but a lot of employees regardless do work in those areas that are going to be subdivided and I feel like it's worth them having the walkable infrastructure if that's the closest stop for them to get off at.
Okay, understood.
I would agree. My family rode our bikes to Park City from Center City Lancaster down to Park City over the weekend and it is extremely not, I mean, if you're not in a vehicle, it's not friendly for anybody. And I think as we consider to look forward, it's really important to ensure that not only walkability but bikeability is taken into consideration as well. So even though simple subdivision, I think it's essential that we at least explore those opportunities in order to ensure that it's safe for visitors, workers, et cetera.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the challenge with deferring it is that if someone does purchase a lot and doesn't change the use, then there's no land development. And so then there's no opportunity to enforce it until someone does a land development, which could be 10, 15 years down the road. And I think that's just kind of the sticking point, whereas I completely understand that a subdivision is a pretty minimal impact development that's happening. For the modification on the existing topo, are we talking about topo for the entire Park City Mall?
That's what our request was for.
For which one, say again?
Our request for the modification was for the entire parcel to not provide topography because we are, it related to Lot 1, we're doing absolutely nothing in our mind to Lot 1.
So yeah, it's everything.
So yes.
I don't know what the city staff's opinion is of this, but maybe we could entertain a modification to only provide it within the lots 2, 3, and 4 if the sidewalks were to be denied and asked to be put in. Because I do tend to agree that a topographic survey of a property of that scale is very unnecessary for what's being done here as long as the boundary survey was completed for the parcels.
It was an ALTA survey that, which we are using that Park City provided to us in order to generate these drawings.
Yeah, so it's, it's based on real fact and...
Oh yeah, it's a certified ALTA.
Sure, sure.
Webber surveyors.
Yeah, I guess that's my, that would be my take on the topography. I think you could even argue for limited topography within the area of design improvement like sidewalk area, depending on what you go with. And then just do LiDAR for the rest of it. Just a thought.
Understood. I mean, we'll be amenable to that. We'll take what we can get, just to be honest with you. I mean, I understand that topography is important if the sidewalks are to be designed and all of those ins and outs. This will kick into HOP permits, this will kick into stormwater, geotech, all the rest. So I will advise Brookfield Properties, but I certainly understand your points.
From the tree perspective, you said you have not seen, you have not passed this plan through the Shade Tree Commission yet.
We've submitted them, we are not in front of them yet. We will be there on the 15th Tuesday of August here coming up. So we will, we will do that. It will be increasingly difficult, I guess I would say it in that way, to balance the current trees that we have, fit the other trees in, fit the sidewalk in, but we can continue to work towards that if that's the desire of the planning commission and certainly see, do the best that we can to create something that's logical. It sounds like specifically along Plaza Boulevard itself to accommodate the bus stop and any of the employees as they may leave or come and go from these specific restaurants within these lots 2, 3, and 4. To the point of the intersection where the Ring Road, which is a private road, there are some severe slopes along that as well. So I would indicate that it's going to be, it would be quite difficult on some of these areas up along the Ring Road in terms of, where are you there? That was fine. At the back corner of the BJ's Restaurant, it's very steep slopes, so I think we would need to explore focusing any sidewalks along Plaza Boulevard itself because we do have some other excessive conditions that will just be fairly prohibitive at the back corner of the restaurant street at the, up to the Ring Road and then there's retaining walls to the left there, Mandali?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Other direction. If you went back to the Ring Road to, right to the upper corner where the food label is, right at the back corner, their loading dock, there are retaining walls and excessive slopes along that back edge. They can't really see with that, the shrubbery there, but it drops quite dramatically down in some of those zones as well. So I think what we would look towards doing would be provide the main corridor and explore that in greater detail if that's the planning commission's desire as far as a first flush to see if we can make something wiggle through there. We may not be able to get the full width that the city's ordinance requires, but certainly we can try to see what we can provide for something.
So, and help me out with some of the specifics as far as the ordinance is concerned. How many new trees do you have specked versus how many should we have in here based off of the street frontage that we're looking at?
On the bottom of the second sheet where the colored graphic is, can you see the chart at the bottom there? So what that chart outlays is the one street tree every 25 feet for the frontages would be a total of 77 trees required. We are indicating that 27 would be new street trees that we are providing right now on this plan. There are 20 existing trees, those are the lighter green, larger trees that are shaded there, would be the existing ones. And then there would be 30...
30 trees and that you would be paying...
That would not be provided with this current plan.
Okay.
And again, we're trying to be respectful of keeping views to their signage down as you're approaching the first turn into the left with the Olive Garden complex there. There's a, there's a sign for those businesses there. There are some clear sight triangles with that driveway as well, but primarily the intersection down at Harrisburg and Plaza Boulevard to look into the left, which was the first photo. If you can visualize that we would have trees on either side of this photo and you're basically getting a glimpse of the Ashley Furniture Building signage and whatnot in that location. So perhaps as we go to Shade Tree Commission, we will work with them and see if we can find more locations. I highly doubt we're going to be able to squish every, an additional 30 more trees in there, just to be honest with you. It's going to be very difficult and our understanding is that they are to be in very close proximity or within 12 feet of that right-of-way line or within the right-of-way itself. And then we'll have to balance that with sidewalk along this public street frontage and that's the way the ordinance reads.
Yeah, I just think of the overall aesthetic of the particular parcel or property that you're speaking about, you know, it's a McAdam heaven, I guess, I don't know. Straight, trees.
Trees are great.
Yeah.
I agree, I agree. It's just for us to try to fit 30 more trees on this plan when you look at this along these two frontages is going to be very difficult. The amount of driveway openings that we have, the pavement that's there, none of that is factored into the accommodations of the way the ordinance is written for the street tree requirements and believe me, I love trees.
Understood.
But when you calculate all the numbers out and then the way that it shows, it just, it almost always comes down to some fee in lieu of for some portion of, because it's extremely difficult on, almost every project I have in front of you guys to fit every tree in somewhere, as much as we love to get them in, it's just, it's just challenges.
It would be interesting to see what the Shade Tree Commission, what their feedback is.
Okay.
And also to see, you know, if your team can creatively figure out how to get more to the plan.
Right, okay.
30 is a lot to be left over, so maybe if you can get that number cut in half would be awesome.
Right.
We need trees, climate change is real, especially in that area that will help provide shade for somebody who may be walking on the new sidewalks.
Right, right, understood.
So I do understand that there are like retaining walls and aspects that make re-engineering difficult. What would the expectation be without any modifications as far as sidewalks go? Like what would you have to do on all the sites if no exceptions were made at all?
I guess that might be a question I might look for some staff guidance on because Ring Road is a private road. I know that the ordinances relate towards the public street, so I might need some interpretation on that. Douglas or Mandali, others are certainly willing to hop in. I don't have that handy at my fingertips, but feel free.
I think sidewalk is required for both public and private streets.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, because like I do understand that there are challenges, like maybe this is a weird way of looking at it, but I see this as the first step in the long-term effort we as a community have to do to adaptively reuse a car-centric mall and turning it into something of urbanism. And so I'm just, I'm, I know it's not your decision to make, it's Brookfield.
Right, right.
But as much sidewalk as they can to connect the entirety of the sites, whether subdivided or not, is where my, where my personal feelings are.
I honestly think we'll have to look at that and we'll have to look at that with our team, just drop it at that.
Understood.
Is your client taking into consideration the changing dynamic of the shopping mall itself and how that's becoming a more walkable exterior environment rather than more... itself and how that's becoming a more walkable exterior environment rather than more interior-facing?
Understood. I believe they are, but again, that, my direction, that was not on the table at this point. I think that in my mind, I see the comp plan and I see those as opportunities and, you know, improvements and ways in which to maybe recreate, you know, but that, that's not what's in front of me at this point. My task was subdivide and create the lots to the extent possible on this plan, so that's our direction.
Yeah, and I know that this comment is much easier said than done, but you as an industry expert in the land development world, you know, can educate your client on, you know, the forward-thinking aspects and, you know, some of the goals that our city is trying to achieve.
Yes, no, understood. And again, they, they have properties, you know, not just here in Lancaster, so they do, they do understand. I don't know all the ins and outs of their business, I don't understand their financials, it's not, I mean, that's not in front of me. So I think that it's a balancing act on that aspect, and I really don't have that background to be able to advise otherwise. But I certainly, I understand, I would love to see similar things as well, so I can understand.
Mandali, if the modifications are denied tonight and the team revises their sketch, they can still come back in with a modification, correct? If a modification is denied tonight and they revise their sketch and realize that they still can't meet the tree requirement, they could come back in, correct? Yeah, I mean, I think, personally, I think something's got to give here in terms of what you end up doing with the sidewalk and street trees, just looking at it at high level.
I'm just nervous to fit it all as much as we want to. I will just throw that out there at this point. There's only so much real estate, we don't want to impact the current trees. Cody is very careful with us about looking at tree protection zones, and in fact, one of his comments was, how are we going to install the new trees without affecting the current trees as far as equipment and whatnot? So now I need to investigate and think about how we will manage stormwater. There's just a very large task ahead in which to explore that.
Yeah, the reason I bring it up is because I think, I think we recognize that there's a lot coming on here.
Right, right.
At least, certainly I do, but we'd just like to see it flushed out to at least a schematic level where, yeah.
Understood.
But would certainly potentially entertain different modifications after you've looked at the plan.
Maybe for some portions.
Yeah.
Understood.
Mr. Chair and Commission, is this something that would make more sense with three out of the four modifications and the city recommendation being known on that? Is this something that would make more sense to table for after the Shade Tree Commission or for something that will most likely for us to deny tonight? What would make the most sense for us to do as a commission?
Or if I may jump in.
Or.
Should we just withdraw them?
Repeat that again, you said we just withdraw?
I would prefer to withdraw than have you vote against, to be honest with you, and I'm in front of you guys all the time, in all honesty.
That makes, that makes sense.
So, yeah, too bad my client's not here. See where we're trying to put this, but.
I'm pretty sure this is video recorded.
Yeah, ultimately, that's probably not the direction that you were hoping for this evening.
No, I understand.
But I think to come back with some more information for us would be extremely helpful.
I respect it.
So we can help you make the best decisions, not only for your project and the client, et cetera.
Yep, I respect it. Could we at least vote on the utilities? Can I take them something?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. What's that? Oh, yeah, public comment, yes, sir. Go ahead.
Is there any public comment?
Douglas Smith, Chief Planner for the City of Lancaster. I just wanted to add regarding the Shade Tree Commission, there is an order of operations there that may not immediately seem logical, but the Shade Tree Commission basically is going to be recommending proposed trees for planting. The trees that are required for planting are set by you all, which was actually part of the reason they came with the modification today, to make sure that they could progress to the Shade Tree Commission and get an accurate recommendation from them on the planting. So it would probably be best to, for the staff, to figure out where trees could be planted along with the developer, and then they can come back to you with another modification request, and those trees could later be approved by the Shade Tree Commission. So certainly appreciate the idea of involving them, it's just the way the ordinances are administered. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I'll make a motion to approve the second modification, not to provide location size and material of underground utilities.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, let it known by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Hearing none, eyes have it, motion carried.
Okay, thank you very much for your time, appreciate all the feedback.
Sure, thank you.
Do we have to make any official recording that they're withdrawing the modifications one, three, and four? That's good?
Yeah, and I can certainly memorialize that tomorrow in writing for the city staff if that's helpful.
Thank you.
Is that okay? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Number four, redevelopment authority of the City of Lancaster, none. Number five, review of full draft comprehensive plan text.
Good evening again, Commission. Sorry? That's it? Yeah, I'll walk you through it all in a minute. Got some exciting updates for you all, so. So this evening, we're here to review the first full written draft of the comprehensive For, just to kind of recap where we're at, on Friday, we sent a Word doc of the full text, and I apologize for doing this in phases, but it's been a large task trying to put this plan together into a graphic format. So I wanted to make sure you had the weekend to review the document, so I went ahead and sent you the Word doc without all of the pretty pictures. That said, we do actually have a graphic format of the plan as of today, it's posted on our future Lancaster website. I tried to get it printed yesterday when we got the file, but it was going to cost me over $1,000 for 20 copies on a 24, less than 24-hour turnaround. So I decided that that wasn't a wise move, and Mandali, if you could actually pull up the document first, the PDF, thank you. So we'll just, I'll walk you through this, but I will send you the link after this meeting so that you have this to look through. As we're scanning through it though, please keep in mind that there's a lot of placeholders, we're still finalizing images, we're still updating some of the graphs and graphics to make sure that things really look good. But we did commit to getting you a draft of the plan today, so we are following through with that despite its imperfections today. So what I hope to do this evening is walk you through this draft plan and get you acquainted with the organization of the plan and the table of contents, show you parts that you're not familiar with yet, and then show you where the policy and everything is sitting in the plan. And then after that, I have a very short PowerPoint presentation that demonstrates some of the policies that we made edits to, partly in response to your comments from a few weeks ago, and in response to some other comments from other members of the public. And then at that point, I would welcome questions from you all in the public. That said, don't, don't mind interrupting me if you have an immediate question about what I'm presenting. So Mandali, if you could just go down, we'll open with a letter from the mayor, keep going. We have lots of acknowledgements. Let's pause on the table of contents. So Chapter One and Chapter Two are unfamiliar to you right now. Chapter One is, Chapter One is a basic overview of basically why we're doing this, the who, why, where, when, what, and presenting the reasoning behind producing a comprehensive plan. In Chapter Two, we get into the policy framework and explain to you, and you're a little bit more familiar with this, with that section, you might even remember the graphic of the guiding principles up top and then the planning systems. So we talk through all of those and describe exactly what is, what each of those components mean for the plan. Chapter Three, you are most familiar with, this is the, really the heart of the citywide policies. And then in Chapter Four, again, this is another section you're familiar with, these are our land use policies and plan. Chapter Five, the Conestoga River, that content really hasn't changed much, there's been some narrative added. And then we end with an implementation chapter, which gets to some of the questions from last meeting. So I'd like to just, we'll quickly scan through one, you'll get a brief preview for what's in it. I do want to pause on Chapter Two and make note of an important change that we made. So Mandali, if you don't mind just slowly scanning, scanning through. Maybe you can use the page button, yeah. So background and what is a comprehensive plan, very high-level text on that, keep going. Relationships to other plans and why we're updating it, a little bit about our community engagement process. Keep in mind, there will be a separate community engagement update that's provided when this planning process concludes. Timeline of engagement and regional context, keep going. An FPO means replacement only, so when you keep seeing that only, over and over again, that's really a placeholder for a picture or something else. Chapter Two, we start with some historic context and explaining some important facts about the city, about our development over time and different key metrics that have And that continues with trends and major issues. So here's the graphic that I, sorry, go back one, here's the graphic that I mentioned. Here is where there, we have made a change I want to bring your attention to. So on the right-hand side, there's the elements and community development objectives. So early in the process, we came up with a draft of community development objectives, which is required by state law to be created as part of the comprehensive plan. This is what we've heard from the community, and we restate that, try to synthesize the feedback that we've gotten. Let's pause on that. And so we've been wrestling with the initial list of community development objectives and how to incorporate it into the planning structure that's in this diagram. After some deliberation, what we did is we rewrote what we're calling elements. So beneath each of the planning systems, you'll see there's a title that says elements. Each chapter has three or four elements, and they're kind of like subheaders under which each, all of these policies sit. So instead of just a title for an element, what we did is we turned all of those elements into statements that reflected the community development objectives that were written earlier in the process. And what this helped us do is knit into the plan structure what we were hearing from the community and really make the community development objectives and our policies nest much better and more closely. So we think that that's a big win, so I just wanted to take note of that because it does add some additional content to the plan, and those, what we're calling elements, really have become our community development objectives, and I think that there are 19 total, if I remember correctly. I can keep going. So Chapter Three, again, this is a section you're probably most familiar with. I don't think that there's a lot that I need to say about this, but we can scan through it. I have a more specific PowerPoint presentation about some of the text changes that I'll get to. So each chapter, maybe I'll just orient you to how we have this structured, we have a vision statement for the system overall. We provide some context, important facts about what was driving some decision-making. So in this case, we're strengthening neighborhoods, we're providing information on owner and renter occupancy, and also some of the neighborhoods in the city as well, and other housing statistics. And then we get into the policies and actions, and here's, I'll just draw your attention to the first element in the plan, so element SNH1 for strong neighborhoods. Housing choice, this is one we heard, you know, loud and clear from the community. Facilitate a diversity of housing types, serving a range of household types and income levels to meet the needs of current and future residents. So and then you can see there are additional elements throughout, there's one for historic places and commercial investment, and I think there's a fourth one in this chapter, neighborhood character and identity. So that's the basic structure, and as we, Mandali, you can keep flipping through, you'll see that formula repeated for each of the chapters, sorry, for each of the planning systems. In this case, we're presenting on economic statistics and policies, we have some cool pictures we've been finding. And so System Three is really our transportation section, connecting people and places, again, same kind of formula. Let's just pause here for a moment. One thing, maybe you've noticed this, but as we're flipping through, we have red boxes that are throughout the document. These are really sidebars that help highlight important issues. So on this page, we have two sidebars, one is on mobility hubs, and this is a concept that's promoted in the county's Places 2040s, 40 Plan, and so we wanted to make sure that that was noted here. The city is, actually has two specifically designated transit or mobility hubs, a train station and the one in the center of the city at the transit station, and there's another one that sort of looks like it's actually at Park City. And after contacting county planning staff, I think I have confirmed that Park City was also envisioned somewhere in that area to be a mobility hub, so I appreciated the conversation that we just had around that topic. And then the train station, another important call out here for context. System Four, Growing Greener, this is really our environmental and sustainability chapter. And let's back up just one. Mr. Dastri, you had highlighted the ideas of biophilic cities at some point in a previous meeting, just wanted to note that we do have a sidebar now on that topic, the importance of designing cities with environmental pattern language in mind and making them more green places to be. I got another one for you too. The fifth system, building community and capacity, this is a bit of our non-traditional chapter for comprehensive plans, because some of these ideas actually are not so related to physical planning, but some of the other social systems that help support them. Okay, let's pause here. So Chapter Four, this is our land use section, we're still figuring out some of the layout here, but you can see we're highlighting the renderings that Tippett-Sweever did for us, some mockups of three of our future land use districts. The map has remained the same from the last time you've seen this, there are no changes So here, we're working on the spreads for each of these three, what we're calling really the three residential districts, or the three districts that really have the majority of residents in them, our residential district being the first one, and we'll present two different renderings of that. You can see the streetscape here, and there should be a sort of oblique angle as well. And, oh, there we see the oblique and the street view for neighborhood mixed use, and we have some context photos from the city that we were adding here as well. This text has really remained the same. What I will do after this meeting, just because I didn't say it earlier, is I'll send you a track changes copy of these chapters, so you can see any and all of the edits that we've made. Tonight, I'm going to highlight what I really think are the most substantive changes, there are minor text edits, there's grammatical things in sentence structure that we've corrected, that's probably not all that exciting, but just for transparency's sake, I want to provide that to you so you know what has changed. And priority development areas, so this is one of the other key maps we have in the hallway, keep going, so none, very little of this has changed actually. We're working with similar layouts to what we did for the May 24th document, and our general land use plans, policies, sorry. And then Chapter Five, Conestoga, we're, again, reusing some of the images that we had for May 24th. Map has not changed. Map has not changed. Policies have not changed here. And then the last section, a short section, but an important one, and that's on implementation. And I, I think it would be worth having you read this more in detail and discussing this further also at the next meeting. But I did just want to point out a couple of things. So what we've done is we've identified a set of actions, several dozen actions throughout this plan. We have policies and we have actions. So policies are things that get incorporated into many different kinds of city actions and policy programs. Actions are more discrete. There are things that have a start and, so the actions are really what we focused on here in this implementation section. We have categorized each of the actions in, I think, four or five different ways. We have capital investments, partnerships, programs, regulations, oh, and at the top, planning. So we've gone through the actions and we've categorized all of them according to these five categories. And you can see here on the right, the beginning of our, our action table. So quickly orient you to the columns here. We have the action that's named along with the number that references the early part of the plan, the action type that I just mentioned. We identify the lead agency, mostly at the city who are implementing this action. And then potential partners. There could be more than these. So, but we've, we've started with a few here. And then we have a timeframe. So a timeframe, we've identified short, mid and long term. Short year being about a two-year time horizon, midterm being up to about five, and then long-term being 10, which is when we should do an update to the comprehensive plan. And just because it's labeled long-term doesn't mean we may not start it, you know, next year. I think all of these are really trying to reflect both the effort it takes to accomplish them as well as some strategic timing. So then we do mention implementation and annual work plans and future updates. So, and these are some things that we're working on very closely with staff right now as we're moving into budget season. How do we use this comprehensive plan to actually serve as a foundation for the way that we allocate money at the city in our budget right now? So many of those tools are actually in development right now. They will not appear in the plan because those, those kinds of annual work plans are going to change from year to year. We've also decided not to highlight certain actions here as high priority because we will be doing that on an ongoing basis and that could change from year to year as, in terms of what the priority becomes. So at, at a later date and perhaps this year, we'll, we'll see, we are actively working on prior, basically a prioritization plan that is going to match this with resources at the city and give the community a better sense of which of these short, mid and long-term actions are we starting in the next year or two. And that is it. We kind of lay out the minor amendments, which can, you know, happen more frequently, five-year update and then the 10-year update. And that is, that is the full plan as it stands right now. We are moving very quickly to fill in all of the images, redo charts, make sure everything is really crystal clear for the community. Before we get into policy discussions, just allow me to note some critical policy changes and then I'm happy to open it up to you for broader questions. So we've already gone over that, so we can go to the next slide, actually. So here I'm showing the revisions that we made to the policies that you last reviewed. There was some discussion last meeting about how we support the very low-income community and in some cases, the houseless community. We had a good policy for that, but what we have done here is emphasized emphatically that what we're trying to do with this policy is to support this population rather than the regulation of extremely low-income housing. We have the support for extremely low-income housing. So we kind of, we went back and wanted to make sure that we were being clear about our intentions and that they wouldn't be misconstrued. For, for homeownership, at the last meeting, we had a discussion about, sorry, could you stay on that one? Yeah, thank you. About different forms of ownership. So that's now reflected in this policy. Thanks to Mr. Dastre for raising some of those questions. So here we have expand individual and cooperative homeownership among low and moderate income households. And then the third one here, we were looking for ways to incorporate more measurables into the plan per some of your questions. Here we reference specifically the interim housing strategy because there are clear goals set out in that document about number of units to achieve and how many affordable. So still within system one here, we have amended the historic, one of the historic district actions here. And we did this to make it a little bit more holistic in what we, in our task. Initially, it was written in a way that only evaluated the boundaries of the district. What we are proposing here is that we also allow an opportunity for ordinance review and for best practices to be included in addition to considering expansion of the historic districts. And then the second one here is for zoning of neighborhood businesses. We received some feedback that our mixed-use zoning was very positive, but that perhaps we were not being realistic in our parking, the parking policies that we are promoting here. And so what we did is we added an additional clause at the end that says, it basically is allowing for parking flexibility for neighborhood retail. So for really retail that is serving the immediate neighborhood, there could be fewer parking spaces or perhaps in some cases, none, we'd have to work that out, required for commercial neighborhood mixed-use businesses. There were no substantive changes to system two on expanding economic opportunity, definitely text editing. System three, connecting people and places. Here, again, it's another, this is in response to some additional feedback that we received on parking. We've changed our language here. Instead of saying reduce or eliminate downtown parking requirements, we've changed that to say in designated urban centers. So now this includes all of the red districts that you're seeing, or the, the red district that you're seeing in the future land use map. System four, after some, some harrowing reports across the country on climate change, we wanted to make sure that we were thinking about our merging models for resilient infrastructure such as things like cooling centers and resilience hubs. So what we've added here is explore existing and emerging models. We wanted to make sure that we were being forward-thinking in what we were looking at. No substantive changes in system five and none for land use and none for riverfront. And the map has remained the same, but I wanted to just have it here in case you had any questions. That, that really concludes my remarks. Thanks for listening to me. Questions, comments, please.
Can you back up to the, can we please back up to the parking in the urban centers? I just want to understand, understand that one a little bit better. Are you, so the recommendation to the policy change here is to essentially eliminate, reduce or eliminate the parking requirements in designated urban centers? Is that, so if somebody is working on, let's say, a mixed-use development that has high-density residential housing as well as a commercial component to that particular parcel, is there pending the location of that particular project? If it's in that urban center, they could essentially then waive all parking requirements for both the residential and the commercial component?
That is possible. You know, certainly this policy is pointing in a particular direction. There would need to be more meat added to this bone here when we write the zoning code. Right now, in the CB and CB1 districts, there's no parking requirement for either the residential or the commercial, which I think is a longstanding and progressive policy that's been beneficial to the city. We're looking to continue with that kind of policy. The urban centers language here is important because in the future land use map, when we, early in one of our drafts, we had the red in the center of the city, the downtown, right? But the more that we were studying the city, we realized there really are other places in the city that should see additional commercial ground floor and high-density residential. The stadium district, for instance, is, is one good opportunity. Angle side is another. So we use the word urban centers here because we don't want to focus just on the downtown as a commercial hub, but we want to think about other locations where we can be expanding that, including the train station as well.
How does that play into some of the areas that are defined for dual usage? For instance, we have one, like a couple of spots that are urban centers as well as residential.
Mendel, could you please go back to the future land use map later in the presentation? Thank you. Yeah, so in this case, Park City Mall is one that's striped for both urban center and mixed-use. And, you know, the, the way that that hatching is defined is that really there has to be additional study done before the exact mix and could be determined. So it's a little bit early to say. I mean, I could imagine scenarios where there's part of the site that may see less or no parking and there may be, there may also be scenarios where it's, it's blended in a way that maybe certain uses see no parking or it's hard, I'm sort of just riffing at the moment, but I think we're trying to point in a direction here, but also not be overly prescriptive this early on. So that is, that area and Angle Side in the south is the other one that's striped for both. So you're right, both of those could certainly see consideration from the city and from the planning commission and a zoning rewrite in terms of, you know, what would the parking requirements be in those areas? That'll be a very important deliberation for you all to make.
I think that you may have a lot of copy developers with that.
Douglas?
Yes.
What is the area at the top right? What color is that proposed to be?
Yeah.
It looks a little pink.
Yep, it's both. So this is the Burrell site and it's both light industry and innovation as well as the neighborhood mixed-use, if my eyes serve me well, and my memory too. So the idea here is that, you know, that currently is functioning as sort of a, both a heavy commercial and industrial site. There's some manufacturing happening there. There's office uses. We expect that to continue probably for some time, but there's a large portion of the site that's parking lot and undeveloped in some cases that we could imagine there's densification in that site that helps to respond to the neighborhood across the street as well, which is not in the city, but Grandview is, you know, a desirable suburb just outside the city. There are improvements that are slated for the New Holland corridor. So we're sort of imagining a, a, a long-term, you know, reinvention of that site that could welcome additional uses compared to what it's currently zoned as, which doesn't allow for residential development.
Thank you.
Thank you for a good bit of those edits. My only question, I think, is as far as the parking considerations go, has any thought been given to loosening restrictions on parking based off their proximity to transit as well?
That's a good question. I'd have to kind of go back to the text here and remind myself. I believe that we do have something to that effect in here, but I, I'm also happy to go back and just comb through that and see what, what we do have, rather than digging for it now. Can I commit to looking at that and getting back to you?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mendel, would you please go back to the historic revision?
This is fun. I've been waiting to nerd out on this comprehensive plan with you guys for a long time.
Go, I think it was up two slides, maybe one more. So Mr. Smith, if I'm understanding this recommendation in a little bit greater detail, you're not necessarily recommending that we lessen our historic district best practices, but more so as maybe expanding those in ways that we can continue to preserve the historic value of some of the elements within our community.
Yes, that's right. There, there are some neighborhoods that would not have qualified to be a part of the national registered district that have now aged into that and would be able to. They're not large areas of the city, but I think it does warrant evaluating that. That would be in the heritage conservation district that I'm referring to, which is basically, it's the same boundary as the national registered district. The two are really synonymous. And I do think that there are just updates based on industry best practices that we want to make sure that we're also including, rather than just looking at the boundaries. You know, the boundaries are really administering the, the ordinance and the standards that are governing it. So it didn't make sense to us to only look at the, the district boundaries without also looking at the ordinance text too for improvements. And I, I mentioned including procedural improvements here because there could be some opportunities to, to have wins in historic preservation that are more by right. So we want to just be looking at kind of all options that we can employ.
Would that, would that include looking at options to demolish existing structures? And what that regulation is? I don't know. Well, so like heritage conservation district, right? Like everything that gets, everything has to be, is demolished, has to go through the historic, what's the board, Historic Commission?
Historical Commission.
Yeah. So I'm just curious, as you look to the future of the city and you're looking at, you know, growing upward and the only way to do that when you don't have developable land is on top of existing parcels that may have some old buildings. Is that a part of this policy or is, are you really just looking at how to preserve?
So it's, there's a nuanced answer to that. So the ordinance, as it's written right now, and is governed by, or I should say, the design standards that are used are the Secretary of Interior Standards primarily. And there are ways that you can comply with those standards and still demolish a building that is a possibility. Typically demolition is, is not a recommended action unless there really are serious, you know, structural concerns and some other, there are some other ways that you can look at it as well. So I, I don't think that we're, we would be suggesting not adhering to the Secretary of Interior best standards, but perhaps are there, is there additional design guidance or is there clarity that we can provide for those design standards that could help us achieve our historic preservation goal, goals while also creating a, a clear process for developers and residents to move through?
Thank you.
And I have a little bit of a follow-up question, maybe more so from the implementation stage of this. But as we look at, you know, implementing this, this new comprehensive plan, what or how are we going to do to ensure that our developers have the keys to, to make them successful as well as ensuring that those that reside with as well as ensuring that those that reside within the city or those that choose to reside within the city also understand the tools that they have to protect their own environments at the same time?
And Masuf, are you specifically referring to like historic preservation or just?
As the process as a whole.
Yeah, yeah, the development process. Yeah, I mean, it's a great question. I do think some of the policies in System Five that are focused on neighborhood capacity, neighborhood building capacity, or community building capacity, sorry, get at a lot of that resident engagement and empowerment. And of course, that has been a major focus of Mayor Sarachi's over the years. And the fact that we're streaming this actually right now is partly due to some citizen advocacy, but also the city's goal is to be more transparent and the planning bureau's goals specifically to be more transparent with development. So I think, you know, we're trending in the right direction for sure. There are definitely additional tools that should be looked at in terms of making the process more accessible to people. And some of this is written in policy currently. You know, one example is creating more streamlined ADU process for residents to follow, but also making a more friendly permitting system for, that residents can follow, which I think really benefits both the development community and the residents in terms of, you know, if we're more organized, we can also provide information more easily to residents and create a clear line of communication with them. Does that partly answer your question, or is there more I can get at?
A little, no, it does partly answer the question. I mean, I feel like this, you know, the development process as a whole is just extremely complicated and it's complex. It's lengthy. And to, to a lot of the folks who choose to call this place their home, they have a hard time, from a layman's perspective, understanding how this process works and what their rights are versus what, you know, developers' rights are. You know, we also have a lot of folks that are coming in from outside of the area because Lancaster is a hot market, you know, and those people don't necessarily take into consideration the thoughts and, or I guess the neighborhood itself, you know, the people that have chosen to live here for 60, 70, or how, you know, their life, their lifetime. So I think it's important that we just make sure that not only do developers understand that we live in a development-friendly community, but I think it's important that the residents understand, you know, how to navigate some of those processes and know when to show up, and know when it's not too late, know what questions to ask, and, you know, really easily find the information that they're looking for. Because right now, you know, you have to dig through various pieces of material in order to understand, you know, what is up and what is down essentially. And I guess my, my goal for this, or as we go through the comprehensive planning process, would be to consider how we can make that process simpler, not only for the developers, but also for the residents.
Yeah, thank you, Masuf. I really appreciate those comments. Mandali, could I ask you to navigate to a policy in the PDF plan? I think it partly gets at your question, but I do want to think on that a little bit more too. But let me just point you to one. So this would be in the general, the land use policy section towards the end of the document with the land use map. Up a little further, I think, chapter four. Yep, up a little. Oh, yeah, actually that page with the FP, the page 45, maybe? Go down one more, general land use. Yes, so let's look at GLU 2. If we can zoom in on that one. I think it's just at the bottom of the page, just out of sight there. Yes, so it's actually split with the other column, but I'll just read that quickly. So it says, "Create a development review and approval process that is efficient, customer-friendly, and understandable to those without technical expertise. Establish an integrated review process for boards, commissions, and authorities as part of a development approvals to reduce potential delays. Efficiency is paramount to support economic growth. The review process should achieve high-quality land development and urban design while recognizing economic realities and development costs." So the first part of that certainly gets to the education and simplicity issue. I want to do another review of some of the policies, just to see if that's represented elsewhere. Because I think this maybe, this addresses it in part, but there, it's possible that there's more we could say about it somewhere. I agree that it's a huge challenge.
I'm not sure if the EDC group would be able to help in any way, shape, or form with this, but at one point I was working with Ezra on a plan mainly for the boroughs outside of the city. But we were trying to create some plan, or, you know, it all fell apart because COVID happened, and then their priorities had changed, and we never kind of went back to it. But the thought was, was to create almost like a toolbox. So as a developer would come into one of the boroughs, they could easily pick up and be connected to various resources. If it's a low-income housing developer, that they would be able to have the a toolbox essentially that would connect them to certain folks within this community who have strength in those areas that could help connect them to financing, lending institutions, et cetera. I mean, the same goes through with, you know, any type of development. I'm just using that low-income housing as an example. But I think that as we looked at that from a development standpoint, we also considered how that could be applicable to the residents that are, you know, residing within those communities. And then what, you know, what, what tools can they have in order to, you know, speak up or have their voices heard a little bit more? So I think that's just really important to make sure that, you know, folks understand what they can do, how they can do it, and really where they can go.
I definitely agree with that. We have the contrast of the presentation we had today, where you have someone who's very familiar with coming to almost every planning commission meeting. We are represented by Cheryl Love and her group. But then think about maybe in February, when they were trying to do work on two parcels on Prince Street, and how often the comment was, "I didn't realize that. I didn't realize that. I'm not prepared for that." And we should be just as beneficial for someone who doesn't, I don't want to say doesn't have the experience, but has, doesn't have a full team like that behind them with as much put forward to be able to get something done. Yeah, excellent point.
I believe there's economic potential that has yet to be unlocked in that area. Yeah. Please.
Oh, is it me? Okay.
Well, you can go ahead.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Steve.
And maybe I'll just add that there will be opportunity for public comment. The commission's clearly digging in, which I really appreciate too. So I just want to let others know in the room that that will happen.
Mr. Willens' comments actually reminded me of something we've talked about previously, which is that we can't look at two different development projects and how they might be related to each other in the sense of like the overall fabric. Is there anything we can include in the comprehensive plan so that a developer would have to be more considerate of the developments that might be occurring adjacent to them or in close proximity?
There's a little bit of yes and some no. I'll say the little bit of yes is, or maybe it's a lot of yes, is that we're recommending a set of small-area plans that address what we think are some of the biggest redevelopment opportunities in the city. And in those areas, we really will be setting policy with you all in terms of what needs to be done in those areas, and some of that can be codified, and land use changes can be made based on that. And that does help establish a vision for certain redevelopment areas. The no part is that at the end of the day, there are just certain private property laws that we can't get around. And if two developers across the street from each other are developing different projects, we have the subdivision of land development ordinance and zoning that really guide the improvements that need to be made. And in not all cases will those two developers want to go above and beyond the book for cooperation. The city does have certain areas where that, you know, that can be promoted, but it's sort of limited. I think the SALDO or the subdivision of land development and zoning really are the things that stitch these different properties together and allow for greater ends to be achieved while working with disparate partners. That's kind of the nature of those ordinances if we do them the right way.
Okay, thank you.
So my comments on implementation, so I think that's the biggest, it is, it can be the biggest challenge in a plan this broad and large, which is, I mean, just the nature of a comprehensive plan. So I was really happy to hear you say things about, I think you called it a priority matrix or a matrix of priorities. I know you don't have that information to share tonight, but I do think that, well, personally, I would be interested in how you guys go about that, what values you assign in order to float things to the top of the priorities, and then how that corresponds to some of the plan goals. It's really hard to track yourself in something like this, right? You almost have to have a scorecard that you're filling out every six months. Just throwing out some ideas from plans I've been a part of in the past. But, you know, it's, it's really important, I think, to this board, so to speak, and the city, that we do implement the strategies that are in this plan, or at least, you know, a good majority of them. So it's a big task at hand that your department has to deal with, but I'd be eager to hear how you flesh out that implementation matrix moving forward. And happy to help.
Excellent. Well, maybe we can have a sidebar about that. Thank you.
Yeah, one question. Kind of back to the heritage historic districts that will be expanded. Now, is that something that the, the area applies for? Or the city does the research in that area?
I'm glad I have an expert in the room here. I'm going to take us to have at this and say that the National Registered District can be applied for. Has to be applied for to the National Park Service. And so that's how that would eventually come under the Heritage Conservation District. I'm not seeing a head shake no, so I think I, and then I'll just add one other piece. The Harb is the other district, the local historic district. People call it the Harb for Historic Architectural, Historical Architectural Review Board. That is a district that residents opt into when they, when you get to a certain number of residents in an area. So there are differences between those two. Ms. Jackson, would, do you want to elaborate on any of what I just said?
Excuse me, Paula, excuse me, Paula Jackson, and I used to be chief in a long time ago. But a coffee stain book that I stole from the city because it's coffee stained. This, what we call the Pink Book in 1995 was developed under contract with the Historic Preservation Trust at the time. And in here, there is a map to identify everything that was eligible to be a National Registered Historic District. And from that process, it's over two years, a very involved process to bring an area into the National Register till Lancaster, 2001 was accepted. So we have national recognition for this part of the city to be of importance in the country. And we use that map as a basis for the Heritage Conservation District, but it could go beyond that. It's not required to be the same boundary as the National Registered District. So if there's criteria, I think there was some effort to bring Hickory Tree Heights, we used to call it Claremont, those, Craig, those houses were originally built for World War II veterans coming back. And then it became public housing, and now it's Claremont. But there was some effort by our first historic preservation specialists in the 1990s to add that to the National Registered District. But it was just such a cumbersome process that that never happened. But that, that might be an area. It's been modified, but it was originally built quickly for returning veterans from World War II. So I think that has some significance.
Yeah, thank you. Any, any other public comment?
I have one question before we, just before we pass it off to the public. And I think I knew the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Have we given, does the school district of Lancaster or the school district within the city, which I would think is the school district of Lancaster, the only public school system within our city, is that given consideration as we look at this future growth plan? And if so, how exactly have we considered the school district of Lancaster in this plan as we look at our community growing? Because they would be an essential component to the growth and the success.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that is a great question. There are, I'll answer that in a couple of different ways. The school district has had representatives involved in the comprehensive planning process throughout. They were part of our advisory committees. So that is, of course, a benefit. There's now a new superintendent that I have not yet had contact with in regards to this comprehensive plan. However, that will be, that will be established. So when, if and when you all act on this plan, and it's recommended for adoption by council, there is a mandatory 45-day review process, and the school district is one of the entities that we have to send this to. And at that time, there definitely will be contact made to, to review this again at that point. There are a number of policies in here that get at issues around youth in our city or children. In particular, there's a childcare study that I know is going to be a big priority for us in the near future that has major impacts on, you know, the development of a child over time, but also economic consequences for family and specifically single mothers throughout the city. So there are many policies here that I think address the needs of children in the city, recreational resources being a big one as well. And in terms of, you know, there's sort of the larger problem of funding, which is not a part of the comprehensive plan. It's, unfortunately. And I'm really hoping that that gets, you know, worked out soon with the state. So, you know, that's kind of, I think, the real crux of the issue. But we have other ways that we coordinate with them. We work with them on land development plans and long-term infrastructure. We have stormwater coordination with them. We've done some coordination around pedestrian and bicycle safety in and out of schools as well. So there are a lot of, I think, touch points on the policies that we have. And if we can all get them more resources, I think it'll go even further.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Excellent job as usual.
Thank you.
Public comment?
Hello. My name is Carl Feldman. I live on the 600 block of Hamilton Street, and I'm in the northeast part of Lancaster City. And I just want to start by saying, I think this has been an excellent discussion. You're all asking great questions, and I've learned a lot tonight. I came with some comments. I also submitted comments through the, what I expect to be kind of like the normal channel, and I don't know if I could see you or not. But those are based on the policy document that was released because this was just introduced today, and it looks really good. And I wanted to say thank you for a lot of the very interesting and helpful changes that I think were put into place. I'll start by saying that first and foremost, what I wanted to share was that I'm very glad to see that there was a change, in particular, on the parking element. The original policy component said, if I remember correctly, the goal was to reduce vehicle miles traveled, which is a really laudable goal. It's necessary for climate goals for the city, but it's also necessary to create a livable environment for people to get around through other means. And prior to that change, I kind of felt as though we were willing to say we should reduce vehicle miles traveled, but we weren't really willing to say how we were going to get to that outcome. And frankly, reducing required space for personal vehicle, private vehicle storage on public streets is a part of that and on the development of projects. I hope that continues. I think what was listed indicated that the focus is still in urban core areas, and that's good. But if you want to have neighborhood mixed use, you need to have considerations for that too. So I think the new policy kind of spoke to that, but I saw that as a big positive, and any language that's added to speak to that, and be supportive of being open to that is worth our while. I really appreciated your comments. Mr. Hackett, about prioritization, this is something I've been thinking about a lot when I read the policy document. There's a lot of excellent stuff in there that I think many people are very committed to in our city, but ultimately, you know, we're here, and city government will need to make some decisions about what has to kind of come first, and why that might be. And when I think about what that is, it's making sure that we have enough available housing for our current and future neighbors. And this is supposed to be a plan for a decade-long period, and I suspect if things continue as they have in Lancaster, that will still be a drastic need here. I hope that we can, you know, rise to that occasion by encapsulating it in the plan. The last thing I just wanted to say was that I thought the Future Land Use Plan is really great. It's simple, and I understand that won't be the final product, but it creates the ability to do what is often remarked, looking at excellent places around the nation, even in Pennsylvania, like, this is the urbanism that's illegal to build in most American cities, and that includes Lancaster. So the Future Land Use Plan, as envisioned, gives space to get to that. So, thank you, and I appreciate your dedication here.
Thank you.
My name is Craig Lenhard, retired city planner, 47 years. I've walked every inch of this city, every street, every alley. There isn't anybody that knows the city better than I do. A hundred years ago, the county of Lancaster was farming the Sunnyside Peninsula to grow food for the poorhouse that sat on top of East King Street. Fast forward to the present, the county built the Youth Intervention Center on the highest elevated land in Sunnyside. And that was followed 20 years ago by the county commissioners creating three task forces, a park and open space, a residential, and a commercial task force, to advise the county commissioners who owned the land, what should we do with this land? I happen to be the chairman of the Park and Open Space Committee. And after local experts studied this and made their reports to the county commissioners, the commissioners passed two resolutions. The one was that the Greenway, the floodplain, that should remain as it is, the balance of the land should be developed for housing. The next thing that the county commissioners did, along with County Planning Commission, was put out a request for proposals for developers to come in and propose a mixed housing development for Sunnyside. And Community Basics was selected as the developer, and they were given, put under a contract to proceed with plans. And those plans were in the works for about eight years. At the same time, the county came to the city with a proposal to subdivide the Youth Intervention Center from the rest of the developed land. And as a part of that subdivision, it was required under the subdivision land development ordinance to build a street from the Yick down to the community of Sunnyside. And that connecting road was because if there's a flood or an accident at the bridge or Broad Street, there's no way for people to leave the Youth Intervention Center. So that connecting road was supposed to be built. And as planners, we said, don't do it yet, Community Basics is doing a plan, let's see what they come up with. So the county escrowed $100,000, which the city is currently holding. So there is still a subdivision requirement to build a road in Sunnyside. After eight years of planning, Community Basics did receive a conditional approval from this commission. Now, how many of you have ever been to Mount Gretna in Lebanon? Sunnyside is Lancaster's potential Mount Gretna. It is developed and envisioned with narrow streets and lots that will support the kind of density that you see in Mount Gretna. And the existing community of Sunnyside to the south is developed on that same premise from 1903, a community of tight lots, basically 20 feet wide, with narrow streets and walking paths. What Sunnyside could be is the same thing that Old Town Lancaster was in the 80s, desirable places for people to live and work. The Community Basics Plan called for 300 units out there, to the south in the community of Sunnyside. The largest parcel is 12 acres, and it was formerly the Angelina and Groff Junkyard. But there's a lot of scattered sites out there. And I mentioned before that 150 units had been demolished over time because they didn't meet codes. So you have a potential of four, easily 400 to 500 units to be built in Sunnyside. And based on that kind of development, the city could be realizing 750,000 to one and a quarter million dollars of extra tax revenue that you're not getting today. And if you're looking at homes, they would be based on 125,000 to 400,000 because there's a lot of potential for riverfront development in Sunnyside that could be high-end development. But we don't want Sunnyside to be high-end development, we want it to be a mixed community with all kinds of income levels. So what's the highest and best use for Sunnyside? That's what we as planners should be looking at. We're not growing any more new land. Sunnyside is it. It's your largest parcel of land in the city that's undeveloped. And all of these undeveloped parcels of land in the city have challenges. That's why they're the last ones to get built. But people like SACCA, organizations like SACCA, and Stevens College, and Habitat for Humanity, they're looking for places to build. And certainly, they could do some of that infill development in Sunnyside. I know that Habitat has already built two homes in Sunnyside more than 20 years ago. So when we look at the Future Land Use Map, my thought is, it shouldn't be designated as park and open space in its entirety. It's your future housing development, and it could be a development that is your premier development in the 21st century. It's a place where people are going to want to live and work. It could be a great place. On a side note, when it comes to parking, a lot of the parking that Douglas referred to, even though your comprehensive plan is going to make broad policy recommendations, it will be your zoning ordinance, it's really going to dictate what parking ratios have to be on a particular site. But even if you designate zero parking as your requirement, don't be surprised if a developer comes in and says, I need X number of parking spaces, because that is a market-driven decision, has nothing to do with your codes. So even if you're out by the railroad, and even if you have public parking garages out there, if a developer comes in and says, I want to build an apartment here, or a condo, and I want to have two levels of parking, that's what he's going to do. One of the anecdotes about parking that came to mind out at Costco and Lowe's, everybody know where they're at? There is a connecting road between those two developments, and that was because I talked them into it. It wasn't anything in the ordinance that required it. But without that connecting road, which allows for shared parking, it would have meant everybody shopping at Lowe's had to come out to a traffic light, went to Hemstead Road, and go up the road, and come into Costco. So there's, there's a lot of things that even staff can do that are good planning, things that you could talk to a developer about, and it's not always easy, but it's the right thing to do. So when it comes to your future land use map, and you making a recommendation to city council, I would simply recommend that your motion be not to include Sunnyside as park and open space, but make it residential development for the future.
Thank you, thank you.
Mandali?
Can I ask Douglas a question? We're potentially you, sir, but what was the impetus as to why those 300 units failed in that plan?
Do you have an answer? I do, but I know you as well.
Well, Ken Smith, who was the director for those eight years of planning, I'm sure he spent tens of thousands of dollars on plans. And when it came down to kind of the last minute of getting some of these planning commission approvals, Ken told me, I need to save $2 million to make this work financially. So we saved him the $2 million, then the next thing I knew, we had a new director, and I never heard a real reason if it was financial or not. Douglas?
Mr. Lenhard did a great job detailing, especially at the last meeting, a lot of the twists and turns that the development took, including stormwater regulation changes and increases in the floodplain, which definitely challenged the project. The city was in agreement with Community Basics that if they did not obtain financing by a particular date, then the agreement was no longer valid. So the city owns this land that they were going to develop, they failed to get financing based on the approved plan that the planning commission had, had voted to, to recommend for approval. My understanding is that some of the financing costs were related to the enormous cost of infrastructure that needed to be installed to support the houses, and the sales not really supporting the overall cost of the project, and enough for a bank to say that it was a worthwhile project.
Thank you. I, I can, I knew about the infrastructure, but I really thought the site was fairly undevelopable because of the geology, and it has nothing to do with that floodplain issues and things like that. That's, that was my impression, but I don't know it like you guys do, so that's why I'm asking the question.
I don't know that I would say it's undevelopable. I mean, there's a lot of land there, but there are hardships, I mean, and to do the project that was, that was imagined, they were certainly pressing up against infrastructure costs and floodplains and stormwater management.
And certainly, there's ways to get around those hardships. I just take into consideration the comment about changes to the Future Land Use Plan and where the city landed on it with parks and open space, and if we were to make that recommendation, I just want to make sure I understand the full background and impetus as to why those units were not, did not move forward. So it was really a financing thing because of challenges with the, with the construction and sale of those units, less so about the actual hardships at the site of forwards to actually do that sort of work.
Yeah, and if I may just elaborate a little further, first, I'd like to point out that there are 30 acres south of the quarry that are shown to be residential and green space, and that area is specifically recommended for residential use. 10 of those acres is currently for sale for about $800,000. 10 acres can accomplish a lot of units, but the recommendations that we're looking at is not standard residential houses, it's low-impact, environmentally sensitive housing that would preserve as much of the tree canopy there as possible. The portion to the north that is green, that area, according to this map, is not being recommended for residential. Part of the challenge of covering the peninsula with, with buildings is certainly stormwater management. There's shallow soil, and that was a challenge in the last plan, which I reviewed thoroughly for two years. And the other challenge is, the first time they built to the edge of the floodplain, and then they, floodplain changed, and then they brought back a new plan, and they built to the edge of the floodplain again. And so you can only imagine where that goes. There's another several decades down the line when there's development in Lancaster County upstream, and the floodplains change and storms worsen, it is not a good idea to build to the edge of a floodplain, and that was, that was proven in their first concept, which they had to revise. And they were still showing infrastructure in the floodplain when the, the planning commission approved the plan.
As we look at the open space that the city has available, I mean, the, just the future land, the draft of the Future Land Use Map has very limited green space to be preserved anyway. Sunnyside Peninsula is one of those larger portions. As we think about the recreational elements that we would like to bring to the city, particularly as it relates to the Conestoga Riverfront and the, you know, natural beauty that that has, and any major city now has really taken advantage of the cityscapes, Philadelphia, New York, I mean, Pittsburgh, everywhere you go, there, the cities, you know, Washington DC, there is a lot of recreational area built up. I almost, just as, as I think about this, and I'd welcome any comments from, from either one of you, I'd like to see that space maintained as open space and try to see if there's some recreational elements to it. So as we look at our, not only tourism, but also use from, you know, folks who live within the city, I run a county park three, four times a week, and I love it. If we could expand that and make it bigger and better, that would be even cooler, you know? And the connection between Lancaster County Park and the trails that they offer over there, to jump across the street, you know, and jump on the, the Conestoga Greenway Trail, and have some type of element that could be connected to that particular area would be a really amazing natural nature. And we all know that nature is very good for the human and for the soul.
Interestingly, the first comprehensive plan for the city recommended a prison on that site for the then 70-year-old aging prison in our downtown, in our city. Of course, that prison lasted a lot longer than they could have ever have guessed. But what was envisioned south of that prison was the peninsula remaining a recreational green space and continuing down the Conestoga River to the Sausquahanna. So the, the idea is not actually a new one to maintain the, the environmental integrity that's, that's there. You know, my hope is that the staff and community and consultants that we've worked with have struck a balance to still want to see residential there. We've had three new units built there, actually, over the last year. I imagine that there will be more on the lots that are there. There's work that needs to be done around straightening out right of ways, and there's certainly housing opportunity on those 30 acres.
I might add that in the 1970s, the zoning for all of Sunnyside was still residential. If you know where Williamson Park is, you know where Kiwanis Park is, those were city parks. They were outside the original four square miles of the city, but those two city parks were deeded to the county in order for them to create the first county park, County Central Park.
Jackson?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, the air conditioning affects my voice, that's why I'm not this rational.
Mine too.
When Douglas first shared with me the Future Land Use Map, I was very happy to see what was being proposed for Sunnyside. Craig spent many more hundreds, hundreds of hours reviewing two fully engineered land development plans for the site. And the submitting, the, the city put forth a request for proposals, RFP, the only entity to respond was a nonprofit housing developer. Craig and I did an informal interview, we, we talked to a number of for-profit housing developers, if you remember that, just the two of us, and we came up with a final report. And we came up with a final report. But one of them said he wouldn't touch it because of the shallowness of the soil, the geology. There was no way he would touch it. Another gentleman thought the lake, the quarry, would be a great asset. But again, no for-profit developer put forth a proposal to the city. So it really took community basics, and they put out lots of money and lots of time. But the fact that they walked away, I think, says something about, at least for the time being, you know, the potential of any development. And I do think it's good to have open spaces. It's such a wonderful area with a river, a lake, just to keep some, not everything that's vacant has to be developed. So I think for at least the time being, this is a good approach for to take for the plan.
Tim Stuldre, One United Lancaster and also 800 Walk of George Street. I asked Douglas a version of this question previously in private conversation, but I'd like to ask it publicly. The comp plan has economic implications for developers, for residents, for businesses, and also for the city. It calls for the city to take on some new duties, to expand some of its planning and so forth. I would be interested in knowing to what extent that has been analyzed as the plan was developed and if there are any areas where the department sees either, here are some areas where we could be incurring additional costs, or conversely, here are some areas where we think the plan could lead to reduced costs either for the city or for its constituents.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stuldre. It's a very important question that he's asked. Part of this will inevitably be worked out in the annual work plans as we're, you know, really analyzing our budget and our staff and our projects for the upcoming years. I think that the meat of those conversations will happen there and will happen at a city council level as they're taking into consideration all of the different investments that need to be made across city programs. As we were developing this plan, there, let's see, I would say there are things that fell into three categories. This isn't written anywhere. This is my own sort of framework that I've been thinking about as we've written these policies. One is there are maintenance things that need to be done. Codes need to be updated, you know, we need to improve our infrastructure. And we've provided guidance in terms of how we should do that and what direction we should be doing that in. For instance, adhering to the community development objectives and using them as our guiding light as we're doing that work. There are other recommendations in here that I would say are, you know, within our reach. Certainly, we have to reach for them, but they're within our reach. And then, for instance, you know, I think some of that would be around, let me try to give you an example. an alley study and plan. Mr. Lenhard actually did an alley study. That is the basis of this information that we want to use. But we see that there is additional planning that can be done in terms of how we use the variety of alleys, both public, private, common. And we'd like to be brainstorming more ways that we can be doing that. I would call that sort of like the near-reach project because we have good information that underpins it. We have a decent understanding of what some of the opportunities are. But there's more planning that needs to be done. There are others in here that I would say are a bit outside of our normal operations, but that we see as being critical in order to serve the residents of the city. And I'd like to give you an example of one of those too. So Action CPP 1.5A, for those who are reading along, this is in the System 3 and Transit section. Microtransit Pilot. Undertake a pilot program to test microtransit service in the city in order to improve the efficiency and experience of city residents trying to access employment, healthcare, and education. Obtain federal and other grant funding in partnership with RTA to enact the pilot, offering on-demand services within defined geographic areas, including low-to-moderate income neighborhoods. This is not something we've ever ventured to do before. It is, it will certainly require some additional resources as we've named in that action. So I think that when we made this plan, we tried to strike a balance between those three categories of things being reasonable, knowing that, you know, if we weren't really trying to expand into areas of need, then we wouldn't be doing our job. If we weren't improving upon or sort of, you know, making the next step in some of our programs, again, we wouldn't be growing. And if we didn't maintain what we have, I venture to say, you know, we'd be failing. So those three things I think are held in good balance in this plan. Resources were definitely considered as we did that. There are a few of those, you know, more, those projects that are outside of our normal operations. But we've already been brainstorming resources and in some cases have actually secured some resources to move towards implementing some of those visions. So it is a very important question. And I think it's one that we don't have all of the answers to, but I want to at least assure you that we've been grappling with that and that there is a lot more work to be done on that front with the community, with city council, with city staff as we deal with, you know, constrained budget, as we go through the home rule process. There's a lot to, that's yet to be determined about the finances of the city and how this plan scales accordingly. Yeah. Well, certainly, there's a lot in here that is aiming at efficiency. And we spoke a little bit about the development process. The city is actually already going through a number of efforts to make our permitting system more efficient. I do think that there will be efficiencies gained on the resident's side. That said, you know, as you know, there's a long and complicated game of balancing our finances with the means of the city. And that is certainly for others to speak more eloquently about than me. But I know that we're working very hard to do that. I know that right now from personal experience because I'm grappling with our Planning Bureau budget and our department budget as a whole and trying to meet certain targets. Businesses, I think, will benefit, and developers, and that includes residents, I think, will benefit a lot from this plan. Part of what we're trying to do is unlock some development potential in key places that can help promote job growth and new businesses. This map in particular, the economic development map, I think, really strives to do that. Recognizing our community as a mixed-use community empowers more buildings and neighborhoods and spaces to be used in more creative ways by our residents who live here, who own those properties. So I think that, to me, is one of the biggest gains that the residents stand to make in getting this plan adopted. There are a number of other places I could go with this too. There's, because there's just so much in the plan. But certainly allocating our funding for affordable housing, for critical repair services for residents, trying to promote homeownership. There's so much in here that is economically beneficial for the residents overall. And with improved services and improved design and investment, I think the businesses will always stand to benefit. You know, the density that we imagine appearing in certain areas of the city, and in fact, that we're seeing in our downtown right now, is going to support the retail environment that we have here. You know, we have two towers that are under construction in the city at this moment, which is extremely exciting, and a third one on the way. In fact, all three of those would be on Queen Street. That's the kind of residential density that will support our downtown businesses and retail environment, which is something that a lot of other cities are struggling with right now. So we're very fortunate to have the retail environment that we do and the small businesses. So this plan really has that group, our local investors, at the core of this plan. It is absolutely in the heart of this plan. There's probably more I could wax on about, Tim, but any other follow-up questions to that?
Any other public comment? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to sort of point to next steps. Mendeli, could you open up the PowerPoint again? I think that there is one last slide we didn't look at that was a timeline. Maybe it's up a little further, right before the title, yeah, there. number five is publish the draft plan document. I missed writing the complete here, but I want you to know that it is on the arfuturelancaster.com website. And it's the graphic version. So we did have some printouts over there. I think some of you might have taken the text version if you'd like. You can grab one of those packets. It's the boring text version, though. And online, you can find the version we paged through this evening. We're at number, I'm sorry.
This is the same as what's online, we just don't have the graphic?
The text that you have is exactly the text that appears in the online version, but it's the pretty version with colors. That was too expensive to print for you tonight.
I just wanted to make sure that I understood.
Yeah. Trying to benefit our city residents and save a little bit of money. Number six is where we're at tonight. Full plan review with the planning commission. Public was invited at 5:00 PM for an open house. We're repeating that exact same thing next week. So, or sorry, two weeks from now. So August 16th, we'll have the second full plan review with you all. And we'll be here for another open house if anyone wants to stop in, talk to me or Mendeli about the plan. And at that time, I plan to follow a similar formula to this evening. So you all provided me with some great feedback, so did the public. I'm going to go back to the plan and do some of my homework again and see what changes can be made and just make sure it's the best plan that we can make together. And I am anticipating requesting a recommendation from the planning commission at the next meeting. So consider that over the next couple of weeks as you page through the document and look at what we wrote. So after that, again, just so you know where we're going, if you all recommend approval, it goes out to a 45-day review period set by state law. That includes all of our adjacent municipalities or even sending it to adjacent school districts as well. And Lancaster County Planning Commission, who issues a recommendation on this per the Places 2040 Plan. And then in October, our hope is that it's before city council for an introduction at committee and then seeking adoption from council. There will be a public hearing that's in there as a matter of procedure. So, and then maybe on the 25th, we'll have a fully adopted plan, and it'll be a new day in the city. Any questions about the process and where we're all headed?
So the next planning commission meeting is the last time for general public to give comment on it? Or is there another option for folks?
So at the, that would be, potentially, I mean, it all depends on you all. But if you were to recommend approval at the next planning commission meeting, that would be the last time the public would be able to provide input in this sphere here. The 45-day review period, we will be, I will have to confirm this with my director, but I know that we'll be asking comment from these entities. I think where that plan lives and whether there is an Engage Lancaster exercise or to invite additional feedback, I need to reconfirm. You know, the policy text has been out since the end of May, and we did have an exercise up for a little more than a month for public comment. And we reviewed all of those comments and made some changes. So I will get back to you at the next meeting about some more specifics on that 45-day review period. But certainly, the public would be welcome to attend any of the council meetings and the public hearing to voice comment there as well.
Douglas, a question. How soon is there a plan or how soon is the plan for you to meet with the new superintendent of School District of Lancaster? Is it prior to this August 16th?
So it would not likely be prior to August 16th. I'll have to follow up with others and see how we're going to coordinate that. But certainly, that he, the school superintendent would be a part of the 45-day review period, would receive all of the materials. As to how the school chooses to proceed with that, it's really their, that's their prerogative. This is also my first time going through this with the School District of Lancaster. But the superintendent is the one who would, and his staff, would receive the plan and all the materials. So how they choose to move forward with the review and, I think, is to be determined by them.
So there's really no input from them that would make any changes to what is current, to the plan?
I wouldn't say that necessarily. That 45-day review period is kind of the last opportunity for all partners to review, provide comment. And there could still be changes that are made. I mean, just to set expectations, we may still be working on certain graphic and layout things up until last minute, just to make sure it's as nice a document as possible. Those are not substantive changes that, you know, need to be reviewed if we're changing colors or something. But that 45-day review period does provide us an opportunity to review comments and hold them together with council and consider whether there really is any last-minute changes that need to be made. And that would be for council at that point to deliberate on.
And I haven't seen School District of Lancaster as a potential partner listed in the action plan. So, but you said you will be providing the, they'll be part of the 45-day review?
Absolutely, yeah. I can look at the action table again and see whether they should be named as a partner. You know, it's, we have had a number of people review that list. And just because they may not be a partner on a specific action certainly doesn't mean they're not a partner in achieving our goals with the plan and implementing our overall policies. But I will take a look at that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate all your conversation.
One final thought. Over the years, the city has come up with different plans, like the CRIZ, the Enterprise Zone, where taxes are put in abatement so people can invest and not have to pay taxes on those improvements. If Sunnyside truly is an economic issue, like you can't make the numbers work, why not invest or apply some kind of incentive program to make those numbers work? If I recall correctly, I think SACA got $6 million of home funds and built 18 units. That's a third of $1 million per unit. To me, that makes it doable in Sunnyside. If, since the city owns the land, if you have a bond issue and if you need $10 million worth of improvements, at the end of 10 years, the increased tax revenue you're going to get is going to pay off that bond.
Right.
So just things to think about.
Any other public comment? Okay. Do you have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn, so moved.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, known by saying aye.
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 Pose, ayes have it, meeting adjourned.